Good evening, everyone. It's 6 o'clock and we'd like to start our meeting. We're glad to see so many people joining us in person and via Zoom. This is the LaPorte County Commissioners' Meeting for Wednesday, March 16th, and we'd like to call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
Commissioner Morzynski.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
All three present.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, I'd like to consider this evening's agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Question to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So we have one person missing, so I guess we need to...
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So could we run that vote again? And by roll call, please.
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Morzynski.
Aye.
The ayes, three ayes.
Thank you. The ayes have it. The agenda has been approved. Next on the agenda, consider approval of the March 2nd, 2020 minutes. Do I have a... Sorry, 2022 minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Question to approve.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes as presented from March 2nd. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Commissioner Morzynski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of claims for payroll and operating expenses. Mr. Auditor.
Commissioners respectfully submitting payroll ending March 11th, 2022 in the amount of $1,263,867.23, and operating expense claims in the amount of $3,543,453.64.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
We've moved to approve the claims as presented. And just for the public's certification about its large this meeting, there's about $2 million in lit distributions as well, the townships, towns, and other municipalities in there. So that's why it's kind of inflated this week.
I would second the motion and add that now that these claims have been approved by the commissioners at an open meeting, they need to be paid in light of the ruling that we just got from the State Board of Accounts, directing our auditor to pay the bills that have been approved by this commission that have been held up since before last December. These bills are approved by commissioners. The State Board of Accounts has stated what we said at our last meeting when we ordered the auditor to pay the bills that were approved. And to make sure that we understand, by approving these bills, they need to be paid. And they also need to be paid the ones that have been laying on the desk since last December.
Thank you, Commissioner Morzynski. We have a motion and a second on the floor to consider claims as presented, payroll and operating expenses. May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Morzynski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. The claims have been approved as presented. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. And I want to just mention that we have taken the timer out of here intentionally. The timer seems to be a little bit overkill. However, we do ask that people... The rule that we approved about two and a half years ago was that public comment is about three minutes long. Some of you have more to say than fits in three minutes, and I understand that. But if you could be respectful of the fact that a lot of people want to speak and that we also have a very full agenda, we ask that you be civil and respectful in your comments and try to keep them, you know, as brief as possible. Okay? Anyone here present for public comment, please? I didn't want to discourage public comment. I just wanted to tell you the rules. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make some public comment? Come on up. Please introduce yourself and give your address in LaPorte County, please.
April Daly, 1707 North 675 West in LaPorte. I am the new appointment for the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission, and I'm going to be dropping off this poster to the HR department. And there's going to be 30 of them.
Yeah, you might want to pull the mic a little bit closer to you.
There's going to be 30 of them. So Barb will have the opportunity to put them in the areas that she feels that is going to be... They're going to get the most exposure. And then I also have little ethics guide for public employees that she's also going to be getting, that she's going to be distributing out to the employees. My first meeting was this morning, and I wanted to share a couple of numbers with you. Let's see. As of noon on Monday, March 14th, there's a total of 136 candidates in LaPorte County. And of the 136, six have returned a candidate's pledge to the Shared Ethics Committee Advisory. And we'd like to see that number way, way up because it's only about 4%. Lake County's at 8%, and Porter County's at 9%. And in 20... Excuse me, one second. In 2020, this is where the numbers are really glaring. In the primary election, LaPorte County only returned 22% of the ethics pledge. And in the general election, it was 57%, where Lake County was 53%, Porter was 43, and in the general, Lake County was 86%, and Porter County was 73%. So ethics are clearly first and foremost in everybody's mind, especially with how things have gone over the last number of years as far as our overall faith in politicians and their transparency and doing the right thing. So the more opportunities that we have that we can really get this out, I think the better it's going to be for everybody. And I think it's going to give everyone, including me, and I think a lot of people that have not the best view of how politics are going in our country at this point in time. I will be meeting with some people in Michigan City also to include them in this process. So if you have any questions, I'm here to ask that. I'm here to answer any questions I can have.
If a candidate did not receive the link to the questionnaire, what is the process for a candidate? Sometimes emails change or they're not received. How do they get a copy of that?
Everything was sent. I did receive a report from Diane that gave us email addresses for everybody along with actual physical addresses. So if they didn't have a link, everything was mailed out. There was only one person on that entire list that I do not have any contact information for at all.
Okay.
One of the things that CEAC does too, which I think is really nice, is everybody that signs it has their name then published in the newspaper. So it kind of tells you where people are at. There's... It's not blackmail. It's nothing bad. We're not going to post the names of everybody who didn't sign it. It's basically the people that did sign it. And I did give copies to each one of the people that are up here so you know exactly what the little pamphlets look like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking the job for the county. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Good evening. May I approach, please?
Good evening. Absolutely.
How do I reach this person's email?
We could email him some things.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Randy Beach. I live at 4177 West Schultz Road, LaPorte, Indiana. I asked you at the last meeting to look up mineral extraction in the county codes. I hope you did. This meeting, I want to cover the language that the zoning code contains on mineral extraction. So as part of the meeting minutes, Article 31, Definitions from the Joint Zoning Ordinance. Mineral extraction includes mining, quarting, the removal of earth materials. This pretty much makes it clear that digging minerals is mining. Next, let's talk about industry. We got industry, heavy, manufacturing, processing, assembly, storing, testing, similar industrial uses, which are generally major operations and extensive in character, which require large sites, open storage, service areas, extensive services, and facilities, ready access to regional transportation. Normally generate some nuisances such as smoke, noise, vibration, dust, glare, air pollution, and water pollution, but not beyond the district boundary. Waste is limited to wastes other than those classified as hazardous or toxic by the United States Environmental Protection Agency. Pretty clear. I handed you a couple of photos before I got started. The one shot shows me looking out my garage door. There's a little circle, a yellow circle, over the top of my smoker. In the next photo, it shows exactly what is in the circle. It's an excavator. It's used to extract minerals or earth material from the ground. I still hear that public officials are being told that my property cannot be seen from the extraction site, but I can see the excavator from my garage. That's pretty strange. Now, if I walk to the back of my property, it's 53 feet from the road. They installed there to remove the excavation materials. From the back of my yard, I can see a lot. It's safe to say if the operation was working the day that I was out there with my smoker and the wind would have been out of the north, I would not have been cooking in my backyard. This has been going on for six years. I got to watch the weather to see if it's a sunny day and the wind's not blowing from the north to cook in my backyard. We don't do many things when we have a north wind for a reason. I've learned to watch these things after more than six years. I was reading the February 16th Commissioner meeting minutes. Andy Volz via Zoom, he contested sand is not sand unless the sand is washed. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know really how that works. He also states that he's a lawyer for both parties. It's not by coincidence he understands the law. I think we're talking code, not law. I think the misstatements begin here. First, he states they are not an industrial business. According to code definitions in Article 31, they are. Next, he talks about both sites using street sweepers and water trucks to keep the area clean. I know I have sent in many photos to many of the commissioners showing the debris on the roadways and in the air for the past six years. That includes several photos from today. There is no fence out there. He also claims there's a fence surrounding the property. What I read in the zoning ordinance is that the site located directly behind me is doing mineral extraction, which includes mining. And the operations do match what's needed for a heavy industrial operation per the ordinance definitions. All this is being done in a zoned neighborhood. So what's the boundary that we're looking for in the heavy machinery? It says that the dust cannot leave the boundary. Did either one of you look at the code that I requested you look at?
Yeah.
I believe you're on the commission, Mr. Haney. I don't mean to put you in the spotlight. I understand this is not question and answer.
Sure. And it's not just to answer your question. I do not have it right here in front of me to give you the exact verbiage, but I have looked at it and I have also talked to the state.
Can I come hand it to you? It's copy and paste right out of the LaPorte County zone. You want me to hand it to you? You decipher it from there?
I can go back through and reread it later, but for the exact verbiage, I can't speak to that off the top of my head. Generally, I'm well-versed on most things, but code is nuanced.
Code is code. Law is law. Code is code. There's a definite separation between that. You define the code. If you contest the code, then you take it to lawyers. They take it into the courtroom. I'm talking about the code as written. You read it as written. If it says shall, you must. It's the same as when you were kids. Your mom told you the streetlight comes on, you better be home. You better be home. Why is this a gray area in that you have to wash sand? You have to wash the sand in order for the sand to be sand. That's ludicrous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Beach. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
The item I'd like to speak on is...
If you could just introduce yourself and your address, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Mike Ekovich. What I want to speak on is new business. This is my first time. Do I do that now or when the item's brought up?
You can speak now if you'd like.
Okay. All right. My name is Mike Ekovich, co-owner of Echo Acres Dairy Farm and Ekovich Concrete. My concern is a proposed subdivision west of the Highway 2 and 350 North intersection in Key Township.
Madam President, you may want to keep that comment. I know you generally offer comment at the time of the ordinance inclusion. I believe Mr. Ekovich is talking about 11B.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So I would suggest offering public comment at that point on that particular item, if you could.
Can you hold it just for a minute?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak? Oh, go ahead.
Madam President, David Amber, attorney at office at 601 State Street, Suite B.
Good evening.
I was hoping... Good evening. I was hoping I would not have to come back here. Previously, I've been coming up here and speaking the last few months as a citizen of LaPorte County. Well, tonight, I'm here as an attorney for Friedman and Associates. And I would like to read to the board a letter that was issued by the State Board of Accounts this week that we will be pursuing further on behalf of Mr. Friedman against Mr. Stabos personally, not against the county commissioner, dated March 15, 2022. Dear Mr. Stabos, The State Board of Accounts continues to receive inquiries into the claims payment process in LaPorte County, including delayed and/or partial payment of attorney fee claims approved by the Board of Commissioners. In our letter dated September 16, 2021, we reviewed the claims payment process under Indiana Code 5-11-10-1.6C relating to the fiscal officer's responsibilities to review invoices and bills. As we mentioned, the duties of the fiscal officer include auditing invoices for correctness. Auditing invoices for correctness involves determining, one, whether the bill or invoice is true to the context of the contract, for example, whether the contract contemplates the general service provided, and, two, whether the bill or invoice is accurate, for example, whether the hourly rate is correct and the hourly rate times the hours worked is properly calculated. The auditor is not, underlined and in italics, statutorily charged with the duty to scrutinize each individual element of the claim or inquire into the specifics of work product. That responsibility falls to others. The public officer or person receiving the goods and services must review and approve the claim, Indiana Code 5-11-10-1.6C2, and the executive must examine the merits of the claim, Indiana Code 36-2-6-2. Again, this is not the auditor's responsibility. If an auditor fails to timely pay claims or unreasonably prevents the payment of claims and the county incurs interest or penalties as a result, such interest and penalties may become the personal obligation of the auditor. Accounting and Uniform Compliance Guidelines Manual for Counties of Indiana, Chapter 1, 2017 Edition. Please contact us should you have any additional questions or concerns. Sincerely, Paul D. Joyce, CPA, State Examiner. So mainly if you hear rumblings, something's going on. My office is not going to be pursuing the county commissioners. It will be something that we'll be pursuing with Mr. Stabos. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Anyone on Zoom? Hearing none, let's move on. Next on the agenda, we have requests. We have a couple from Sheriff Boyd. Sheriff Boyd, I know you're in the room, so we'll get started. Consider permission to pay 60 unused sick days to Deputy Susan Wilkie, who is retiring after 25 years of service. Sheriff.
We didn't do department head.
Oh, yes, you're right. Sorry.
It's okay.
All right. Thank you for the reminder. Before we talk to Sheriff Boyd, although if he has a department head report, he's welcome to give one. Are there any other department heads in the room that wish to speak at this time? Any department heads on Zoom that wish to speak? I see Amanda has her hand up.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good evening, Amanda.
Though the sun is out and shining still, that's nice. I just wanted to give you a quick update. I'm trying to find all my buttons there. There I am. Hi. So finally, some good news about COVID. Amanda Laner's, LaPorte County Health Department. Our numbers have been dropping. We're down to single digits. Today, we received notice from the state that we are actually reached the blue level, which is the lowest level, meaning our positivity rate has dropped below 5% for the county. So this is something we have not seen for a very, very long time and hoping that we will continue to see those single digits and under that 5% transmission rate. We have made a move for our COVID vaccine clinic. We moved across the street. We are now at 901 Lincoln Way, the old Heritage Place. Still working with Northwest Health. And again, thank you to Northwest Health for extending, for offering us that space for our clinic. And the current hours are Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 8 to 6. Our test site is still open on 8th Street in Michigan City. We are down to Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays. We're now closed Friday, Saturday, and Sundays. But we will keep that clinic, both clinics, open as long as we see the need and as long as we can. We've seen this before. Last year, we were getting ready to shut both down, and everything ramped right back up again. And we were one of the last counties standing in the state that still had any clinics open. And everybody else was scrambling, and we were able to get right back to doing what we were doing so well. And I also just want to briefly say that we were... Our vaccine site was inspected by the State Department of Health. They came in to inspection of the clinic, our records. They were so impressed by our clinic and what we are doing and how we operate that they are talking about coming back and filming it to use as a training video, to use as training material for the rest of the state. So that is a huge compliment to both Peggy Rose, to Jenny Smith, to Ashley Killen, to every one of our nurses, our supporting staff, the IT maintenance, and the support that we've received through the community and the commissioners and everybody. So I just wanted to, again, say thank you to all of our partners and for bringing this community together and rising to that challenge. So that's what I have for you this evening. Thank you, and we'll be talking to you again here shortly.
Thank you, Amanda. That's great news.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your leadership. We relied on you a lot of the last two and a half, three years, and thank you for stepping up to the plate and having... Bringing out the talent in your team, but also making sure that the community was well aware of the things that we had to offer. So thank you for that. Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Madam President, this is Joey Winski.
Hi there, Joey.
If I could, I'd just like to report, and I'm sorry I got on late. I was having connecting problems. But I'm not sure if our auditor or his chief deputy has reported on the tax sale, but I'd like to tell you how that went if they did not.
Please proceed.
We made $206,000 on our tax sale that was held last Thursday. And as of that sale, we have the lowest amount of taxes owed to a county and the highest rate of collection that we have ever had. So I'm just proud of our tax sale staff. And we have another one coming up on October 19th. So we're working very hard to keep that tax collection in the positive and keep it at a high rate and keep the taxes owed low. So that's my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Joey. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Great. Thanks for all your hard work. Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Madam President, as Commissioner, I'd like to speak on. I wanted to set the record straight as to what's going on here. It's caused a lot of heartburn for some of us. They've been involved in the county government for a long time. I have the highest respect for the county employees that we have. We have some amazing people. A lot of these amazing people will use their day off on Election Day to work for the county, to help with the election process. Some of these people have been doing this over 20 years. I would think that our county clerk would welcome with open arms all these people and all of their experience and dedication to helping with the election process, which is no easy thing, by the way, and with all the experience that they have. However, our clerk has taken it upon herself to say that she doesn't really want county employees working for the election. She thinks that it worries about integrity. To me, bringing in a whole bunch of brand-new people would question the county's integrity as to what they're up to. I don't understand what this is about. I don't... It doesn't make any sense to me. Why she would take this stand to turn against our good county employees. I want everybody, especially our employees, to know what's going on and as to... I don't know why the clerk doesn't want county employees working. But I want to ask the clerk to reconsider whatever motivation has led you to make this decision. It's not good for the county, but it's certainly not good for the clerk, and it's not good at all for the election process. So I want to make sure our employees know what's going on there. I don't want anybody thinking that this is the commission's fault. It's not. It was not. I am 100% behind having our employees work to help with the election. It's the clerk who has made this decision that she doesn't want him. So I want the record to be straight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
I would like to. I'm Heather Stevens, county clerk. I want to make crystal clear to Mr. Morzynski that in no way did I say that county employees should not work any part of the election. We have multiple employees that work out at the polls. What I said was that I have an issue with a county employee who has an appointed position. So their position depends on who wins certain races. I have a problem with an employee in that position programming our voting machines. That's what I said. So I just want to make that clear. County employees work the polls all the time, and it's great. But they don't have their hands in the machines, and they don't have appointed positions. So I want to make that very clear.
Can I ask you a question? Was this same employee working in that same position when I was on the ballot? When Dr. Pearl was on the ballot? When Sheila was on the ballot? When County Grandma Rosa was on the ballot? Just ask him, because you should know.
Yeah, yeah. That was the case. I wasn't the clerk then. I am now. Election integrity means everything to me. Voter confidence means everything to me. And I don't... I think it looks bad. I have never accused any employee of doing something wrong, but it looks terrible. I was... I've been cleaning. I've been cleaning that election room. Our machines are programmed. The room is a mess. And it would be great for me to ask my husband to come in and help me this weekend. But do you think I'm letting the Republican Party chairman anywhere near our programmed voting machines? No, because it would look terrible.
Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
I'd like to speak briefly. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I just wanted to say that I do not take lightly saying this, but without the ability to look at the elements and components of Mr. Friedman's billings in particular, no other... Other than his former law partner, Mr. Cernick, no other attorney has contested when I make requests to look at items to verify that they're in concert with a governmental purpose or not political. Mr. Friedman has a penchant for engaging in political acts. I had to request an email from Baker Tilly, our financial advisor. Mr. Friedman, I have a reasonable basis to believe as the county auditor, and I report this in all seriousness, that Mr. Friedman is engaging in fraud in his billings.
Sir, this is a department head report.
And this is a department...
Excuse me. I don't... Excuse me. I don't, I am not going to put up with charges. Excuse me. This is not appropriate. This is being litigated. This is not appropriate. You have a state board of account. Yes, sir. Please, please. You're welcome to speak, but you are not going to make attacks on people's integrity and character.
Let me report on the email that I got specifically then, and we'll limit it to that.
Sir, if, if you're going to continue attacks, I'm not going to put up with that.
So the email that, that, that I've received from Baker Tilly was an email that Mr. Friedman sent.
Sir, this is being litigated. You cannot speak about this.
No, I'm sorry. This is a report of a department head. You can't exclude this.
No, sir. I'm sorry.
So Mr. Friedman sent an email with, that had your resolution that he wrote, you claimed you wrote it, but it was a resolution that talked about my Facebook.
I'm sorry. This is being litigated.
I'm going to finish this. I'm sorry.
Please sit down.
It talked about my Facebook page, which is political.
We're having a recess right now of three minutes. Thank you. Please.
You can't cut me off like that. That's wrong.
Yep, sir. We're not going to be.
That's wrong.
I'm sorry. This is being litigated. It is not for public comment.
I'm staying right here.
Go ahead. Have some thought about what you're saying.
I get my three, I get my three, I get three minutes. Put it during public comment. You can't cut off a department head.
Yes, you can.
There are certain things that you're not going to talk about.
He's engaging in politics nakedly.
Sir, this is being litigated. This is not for this meeting. This is being litigated. You have a lawyer in the room that was trying.
On the auditor.
Did you follow any of your words?
For what it's worth, I believe what Mr. Ambrose had said was he was doing it, he was going to personally file, not file anything against the county, so technically the county wouldn't be involved in that litigation at this point.
Exactly.
According to what Mr. Ambrose said.
There's a lawsuit, and this is not for public.
Who cares? That's private.
Excuse me. I'm not debating with you.
The meeting's not going on right now. We're talking.
Excuse me. I'm not talking. I'm just telling you that that's where my stance.
I'm telling you right now, no personal suit is going to fly in a court because I'm acting in my capacity as auditor to not pay him. So the notion of his idea of suing me personally when it's under an auditor's capacity is silly.
The meeting of the Lepore County Board of Commissioners is reconvening. Mr. Sabos, will you continue?
I will keep it brief. I do not appreciate my integrity being attacked around my bill paying policies. I believe I have a reasonable basis to question Mr. Friedman's bill.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I have no audio.
Let me just check, please.
Oh, he said he had no audio. All right.
Thank you. Can you hear now, Mr. Marzinski? Okay. Rich, can you hear me now?
I hear you now.
Okay. There you go. Thank you.
I, I do not appreciate my integrity being impugned. We have Mr. Ambrose, Attorney Ambrose, coming in at the beginning here and making statements about the auditor. I believe my actions have a reasonable basis and a moral basis and a legal basis, all of them. I believe I'm acting in my capacity as auditor. I believe any suit against me that's private needs to be done against me as auditor because I'm acting in my capacity as auditor to not pay the bills. So it's absurd. It's one thing to be sued for defamation personally, but with the auditor's actions. And specific to the example of a Baker Tilly bill, a Baker Tilly email that I got only from them, because Mr. Friedman does not provide his emails and they're kept on a private server, the resolution that you passed that denounced me from my Facebook postings that were political and for the one day late bond payment, that resolution was emailed to Baker Tilly as professional service advisor, and he charged us to send that email with that resolution. Why does a professional service advisor, a financial advisor, need to receive that email? If they read that email and spent time reading that email, they could bill us $300 an hour to read that email. These are the types of things that I am catching that are just not acceptable and not professional. And so I will go to court if necessary, again, for the right of the auditor. He needs to have, his contract needs to be revised, and it needs to say that the email, his emails need to be kept on a public server. He should not be able to do what Hillary Clinton did or certain politicians that keep it on a private server that they can delete when they want to or whatever. He needs the accountability of having his emails kept on a public server, and he needs to be able to, like any other public official, any of us, have our emails discoverable. So he's provided nothing and he maintains the sham of, of attorney-client privilege when 95% of his emails are not attorney-client privileged. So I'll be sending you an email with a report on the elements of some of his billing items that are nakedly political in their essence and unacceptable, and I won't pay them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Madam President, I would like to speak about something.
Sure.
Thank you. So earlier this week, I'd like to touch on briefly what Commissioner Marzinski brought up earlier, and then our clerk Stevens addressed. I met earlier with Clerk Stevens as well as the Secretary of State Sullivan, and we talked about elections, election integrity. I think that's something that's really important, and coming out of a previous election cycle from a previous clerk, there were, there were some irregularities that, that had occurred with that election. In fact, one of our local journalist outlets won an award for their coverage of some of the things that transpired during the last election. There can, what we want to do, what I, what I think the goal ultimately here is, and first, I want to stress that there have been no accusations made toward any county employee whatsoever, and there's, this doesn't have to do with that. This is in relation to, I believe the goal for everyone is to have a, perception can be reality at times, right? So the goal here is to make sure that there is not even an appearance of impropriety anywhere where someone might be able to make some sort of accusation or have some sort of concern. Having things transparent, having things above board is extremely important. So when it, when it relates to that, especially given some of the, some of the things that transpired during the last election, I think it's important to give that confidence to the people of Lepore County and the voters of Lepore County, as well as the rest of the state, and that, that perception is reality is, is a, is a, is a term that actually the Secretary of State used earlier this week, which was a great meeting. She came and visited us here in Lepore County. Great meeting there, but there were other elected officials from Lepore County here as well for that, including Representative Pressel, obviously Clerk Stevens was here, and numerous other folks, county council people as well, Councilwoman Grandma Rosa, as well as Councilman Rosenbaum, and I know leaving some other folks out. In any event, I, I think the goal here, we shouldn't necessarily get bogged down into trying to make something out of something that shouldn't be. The goal here is to provide open, transparent elections and let the people have confidence in what's going on here in the county, and, and if certain things were done a certain way for a while in one or two aspects, maybe it is kind of time for a change and to make sure that, that we can, you know, we, we can dispel any possible dispersions that may be, that may be cast any particular direction. And I think it, I think that's the ultimate goal here. So again, this, this wasn't directed personally at anyone, and the goal here is to have open, fair, transparent elections and people to have confidence in it and not to, to remove any possible question that you could here or there in, in regard to that. So with that, hopefully that sheds some more light on it and that, you know, we're, we're all looking to have open, fair, transparent elections without any shadows, and we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Madam President, members of the Commission, I, I know you don't want to leave the impression, Commissioner Haney, that there is any evidence of any kind of wrongdoing in prior elections by clerks of either party. I mean, the, the county's had a long storied history of good, honest, fair elections, and certainly that's, that's not your observation that you're making here today.
My, my observation is simply that perception can sometimes be reality, and there, there was a local news media outlet that won an award for their coverage and expose on certain things that happened during the last election. So I, I, I believe, I believe it's important to, what, what faith may or may not have been disturbed by certain members of the public, I think it's important to restore that for each and every member, every citizen of Lepore County, as well as each and every voter, to know that things are being, going to be done appropriately, above board, openly, transparently, and, you know, and, and anything that may come up as an issue, trying to get ahead of it, you know, I, I can appreciate that. At the same time, I think it's important that we're, we're not castigating any particular person or anything else. It's just, you know, there, there's a new clerk and they want things to be followed a certain way, and it seems like the Secretary of State's on board with that as well. So it's, that's, that's kind of where we are.
Okay. We just want to clarify for the record, though. Anyone ever having any evidence of wrongdoing has the opportunity to file such with the county election board. There's both the election contest statute and the election recount statute, and so neither of those was exercised this past election, to my knowledge. So it's, just so that we're confirming that on the record. Thank you.
So I'd like to add a perspective. We're, we're not, we're dancing around the, the issue a bit. There's a, a particular county employee who has worked for this organization that runs our elections since 2006. This person has done on her off time, not on her county time, on her weekends, on her days off. She has represented our county well. One of the things that she has brought to this part-time work is that she knows the county back and forward. She knows where every machine goes. She knows where every precinct place is. And so this outside company comes into Lepore County and they rely on us to know the geography, where, where we've got blended precincts, you've got two precincts and one school. They don't have that local knowledge, and so there is a, a value to making sure our elections run very, very well, efficiently, effectively, and there are no broken machines. If there's a broken machine in, in the library in Wantata, somebody's got to know where that is, and they know, have to get down there and replace it so that there's not a backup of voters or voters are being turned away because there's no machine. So this particular person has done a really good job, and I, I, you know, talking about integrity of elections, this county has had really strong election integrity for decades and decades. And so I just, I, I think, you know, the clerk is entitled to do what she thinks is right, but I do think it's really important to, to note that the person we're talking about, who is a county employee, has worked for this company since 2006 and is a, is a, they come to her because she's so knowledgeable, and so she knows our county, she knows election law, she knows the machines, she knows how the machines work, and people trust her. All the other poll workers come to her to ask questions. And so I, I think that it's important to note that, that, that particular person, since we're dancing around, it isn't all county employees that we're talking about, because a lot of them work the polls. This particular one is currently in an appointed position, but she's worked through many, many election cycles with, without any issues whatsoever. So are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
I just want to point out, Madam President, that the, that person we're talking about, the clerk calls that person many, many times, asking advice, asking how things work, how, how this should be done, because that person knows, and the clerk does not. And so to, to remove someone who is a source of, of all your information about how this is going, it doesn't make any sense to me why you would do something that, you're shooting yourself in the foot, and you talk about integrity. This is casting a suspicious eye over the whole process system, what they're up to. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no other departments that wish to speak. Tony, you have something? Okay.
Madam President, members of the Commission, it is truly my honor to inform your listening, viewing audience and members of the public today of just a quick snapshot of some of the activities in the Office of Community and Economic Development. We were extremely fortunate today to cut the ribbon on a very exciting manufacturing operation here in Lepore County today, which is invested, will be investing and continues to invest, but estimated at $7.25 million in both real estate and personal property, manufacturing equipment, and will be employing approximately 350 people. It can't be done without a significant cooperative team effort to, to make that happen, and I just wanted to, to inform your, your viewing audience of that, that exciting event, and wanted to say thank you for all those that took the time to attend and celebrate on their behalf. I was remiss in not recognizing our county assessor, who plays such a critical role in what we do, and I continue to somehow overlook our magnificent Mr. Mike Schultz. And I wanted to, to extend my apology to Mike. He, he has such a great sense of humor. He puts up with me in that regard, but I wanted to acknowledge that. And then secondly, while the 350 jobs is very substantial, there's a tremendous amount of energy and effort in the office right now working on housing development. It started back in, in early 2020 with the Housing Task Force that stemmed out of the, the, the effort of the Unity Foundation and the Convention Visitors Bureau, and that, that significant effort has really transformed us to the point now where it's time to take action. We are working with numerous residential, single-family residential developers that are, quite frankly, stepping up to the plate in a very aggressive way to meet the challenges that we know that this, this county has, and that is to have adequate single-family housing opportunities for both the, the empty nesters and the approximate 4,300 single-family housing units that are currently not being met. So we know that that demand is there. We know that our existing employers are, are needing to add to their workforce and new employees needed and seeking, actively seeking to come to Lepore County. We want to be able to accommodate those, their wishes and also the wishes of the, the folks living in Lepore County now that are, that are looking to downsize into a low to no maintenance type unit. So I only point it out because the activity is significant and this office is up to the task, and we're excited about the direction. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? Let's move on to requests. Sheriff Boyd, you get to talk now. Thank you for your patience, sir.
Thank you very much. This will be much lighter. We're here asking for your consideration for the payment of 60 unused sick days for Susan Wilkie, who's soon to retire with us. Also, we're seeking approval to go to the council for funding for that. Sue is a 25-year veteran of the sheriff's office. She was hired by Sheriff Bob Blair, and she's veteran of the sheriff's office. She was hired by Sheriff Bob Blair. And she spent the vast majority of her career on the midnight shift. She's a real trooper. She's seen a lot. She's been through a lot. One of her most valuable employees. And I don't think I can ever remember a time when Sue called off sick. She was always the most reliable of all our employees. We're going to miss her dedication or loyalty.
Motion to approve.
Hey, approach council.
Yes.
Yeah. I will second that if you're amenable to also approach council.
Second, with the understanding that he'll need to approach his council.
So we appreciate Deputy Susan. She goes back to Bobby Blair. She's had a lot of experience and we will miss her. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Marzinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Motion as carried. Thank you. Next, consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriation to pay 60 unused sick days to Dave Spence, who is retiring after nearly 44 years of service. Wow.
That's correct. He has survived six sheriffs. He was hired by Sheriff Jan Rose. And he's faithfully served each and every one of them, which is a testament that he's survived so many different administrations. But he was one of our most valuable employees. He served in the jail. He worked in patrol. He went to our warrants division. He retired from our merit division and then was immediately hired as a civilian process server. We're going to miss him. We're really pleased that he's going to be able to spend some time with his family and grandkids in particular. But when you think about nearly half a century working for LaPorte County government and the sheriff's office and the dangers that he faced every single day.
That's incredible. Very valued employee. I would entertain a motion.
So moving.
Motion. Second. And like I had, I've known Dave for many, many years. As short as that guy is, he was a really good basketball player. There's Dave, Joe, Pat, Bill, Brent, all the Spences. And he's a delightful guy.
That's a big, big family. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Marzinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you, sir.
We do have another item on the agenda.
Under new business, why don't you go ahead and we'll take that one, too.
This is Ginny Crossland, our administrative coordinator.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
As administrative coordinator, I'm also the IDEX coordinator for the Sheriff's Department. We have an upcoming FBI audit for criminal justice information security, or CIGIS. As you know, the sheriff's office is a secure area. And in order to gain compliance with the FBI, all guests or employees that are not within the sheriff's office will either need to be CIGIS certified and fingerprinted or escorted by a member of the department. The FBI has required this MOU that states basically that we're just, you're going to make sure that everybody is in compliance. But we'll make sure everyone's in compliance with that. But you agree that that is something that we can accomplish together. And it's with a renewal period of two years. So I would be back in two years to ask you to sign in. But I have to compliment everyone that has worked with us so far on getting this accomplished. The maintenance department and county IT have been really great with us. So it's been a smooth process.
Great. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the MOU required to be FBI compliant with regards to protection of criminal justice information security from the sheriff's department. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Commissioner Marzinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Motion as carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Consider National Public Safety Dispatcher Week, April 10th through 16th, 2022. E-911 Director Barb Houston. Good evening. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Excuse me. April the 10th through the 16th is National Dispatchers Week. And we're here to honor our dispatchers. I have presented to you an article out of a paper that I get from the National Associations of Counties. And Maryland State Senator Cheryl Kagan has said, "County officials hear about next-generation 911 centers, the role of the hero behind the headset."
Love that.
And I fully agree with that. If the Commissioners remember, in February, when you closed the county offices, that was a very smart move because there was a huge storm coming, a snowstorm. And I want to give a little thought to when that storm started, the LaPorte County Sheriff's Department, the midnight shift, which was Andy Heineck, his crew, they sent an email that said to the center, if the dispatchers can't come in, we will come and get you and bring you in. The EMS, they sent another email telling us where the additional supervisors would be stationed, the additional vehicles in case that were needed. There were fire departments, volunteer fire departments, and volunteers actually spent the night at the stations so that they could go to any emergency calls. And of course, EMS and the county highway department was out doing their job with the roads, clearing the roads. We did have a call come in, and it was a possible house fire in the South County. The state of Indiana snowplow actually plowed the road so that the county officer could get to the call. The county highway department plowed the road so that EMS and the fire departments, two fire departments actually responded, three sheriff's deputies, EMS, and one of the fire departments had a plow on one of the trucks, and they plowed the driveway of the home so they could all get to the home where the fire was supposedly at. EMS, county highway, LaPorte Sheriff's Department, 911, even the state highway department, they were all involved in this. And they're all heroes behind the scenes, basically, keeping LaPorte County safe. And fortunately, the homeowner had the fire out before anybody got there, found the source and had it out before anybody got there. But the response was phenomenal in a snowstorm that everybody did so bravely get there. So anyway, I think they're all heroes. And I do have some stats on how many calls, if you're interested in obviously hearing these. In 2020, there were 58,000-plus emergency calls. Of those, 166,610 total calls into the center. And of all those calls, 114,152 calls were actually dispatched. That was in 2020. In 2021, we had an additional 59,000 emergency calls. Of those, 136,268 calls were dispatched, and we had a total of 168,936 calls, total calls coming into the center in '21. And I compared that to calls that came into the center in 2010. We had 147,048 total calls in 2010. So we're up about almost, well, more than 20,000 calls in 12 years. So that's quite a few. The dispatch center, they're great people to work with. They are always there. They come to work. They do their job. And I'm very proud to be their director. And appreciation for the Dispatchers Week, April 10th through the 16th. I'd appreciate your support.
Thank you, Barb. You know, those dispatchers hear from citizens when we are at our lowest moments, our most frightened moments, our most tragic moments, and they handle themselves and get the information that they need to do a safe and effective dispatch. So they are heroes behind the headset.
They are very professional.
Yes, they sure are.
And they do a great job.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we, LaPorte County, recognize National Public Safety Dispatcher Week from April 10th to April 16th, 2022.
Thank you, sir.
I would second that motion and agree with Barb that all of our first responders are heroes, including Barb. And none of them make enough money, for sure.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to consider National Public Safety Dispatchers Week of April 10th through the 16th to honor our 911 dispatch team. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Marzinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias?
I didn't hear you.
Commissioner Mathias?
Oh, aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Motion as carried.
One more question. When I was going through everybody that responded, did I mention the volunteer fire departments?
Yes, you did.
Yes.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Good teamwork all across the county. Next on the agenda, we have consider resolution approving the I-94 U.S. 35 Economic Development Plan.
Madam President, I'd make a motion that we, oh, yeah, better mind.
No, that's just fine.
Mr. Redden will give us a brief overview of the plan.
Plan commission approved the order. And what that means is that the development plan for the area is consistent with the existing zoning ordinance of the county. So we're ready to move forward with the next steps with the redevelopment commission and the project. So we'll be back to the Commissioners once final design and utility extensions, the cost estimates are completed, but this is a step in the process. Thank you.
I'd make a motion that we approve this. I've passed the, not only the RDC, but the plan commission, the second time we've had it, unanimously, we both forged. I would make a motion that we accept the resolution as designed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the resolution approving the I-94 U.S. 35 Economic Development Plan. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Marzinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Great.
The motion is carried. Resolution is passed. Thank you.
I'll go with that.
Consider Highway Superintendent's recommendation of bids for bituminous material paving and pavement markers. Mr. Warner, I don't know if he's on.
I received a message earlier that he's at road school right now, so he won't be here. But I believe the general consensus is that we should, I would make a motion to approve the bids as accepted, with preference being to the lower prices on each. Moving forward, that way we have an alternative to fall back on, just in case there's something later this year where one vendor runs out of product, we're not caught in a lurch given supply chain issues.
Yeah, I second the motion. I actually talked with Dwayne today. He was at road school, but talked to him on the phone. And actually, we've done this the last few weeks, up for bids. And one is the lower price and the other is a backup in case of emergencies if they happen. So I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bids as presented and with a stressor on the fact that we will attempt at all times to use the lowest bid so that we are saving the taxpayers' dollars. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Marzinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Motion as carried. Consider Facilities Directors' recommendations based on evaluations of bid for the Rolling Prairie EMS base and highway garage, and consider approving application to IDHS Division of Fire and Building Safety. Mr. Levandowski and Caitlin.
Good evening, Commissioners. Larry Levandowski, Director of Facilities, and Caitlin Sims. As I've sent everything to you, I believe, we've got the contracts from the winning bidders. I'm very happy to report that we had some very good bids came in, very close. It was nice to see we had five bidders. The total of the construction costs actually came in under $2 million, which we're very happy to see. It was $1,987,105. Would like to, in order to keep this thing moving, we're asking that the Commissioners sign the contracts tonight with the knowledge that we still are going to go before the council on the 28th for approval. And if we get approval at that point, then we will move forward. That way it will alleviate any delays that we could have of getting construction and also keeping some of the prices that the contractors have locked in right now, especially with the escalation of prices right now of fuel and materials. One of the other things we're going in front of them with the construction was the 15% contingency that we were looking for on there. And also, we separate all these out for their evaluation of what they would like to do. And also the minor electronics for the speakers that are need to be installed in the EMS base. The total price for the complete project in Rolling Prairie ended up coming at $2,306,691.62, which still, if you remember, I gave you a budget just before the meetings that we had put together, is still below that budget, I believe, which I was really very proud to see. The other thing that we've got before today is, to keep things moving, the application for the construction design release that went down to state just needs to have a signature so that we can keep things moving forward.
Madam President, I've had a chance to review all three contracts. We're comfortable with the form and content. Also want to commend Gianini Associates, the engineering firm that was consulted by the facilities director in Porter County for the evaluation they did of the big contracts. Any motion you make, if you would, make it subject to financing approval by the council and then also approving the plan release application as well.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Just a, however, I wanted to also bring up, the winning bidders for this were all LaPorte County contractors. Site work was won by Pavey Excavating right here in LaPorte. The MS base was New Tech Builders out of Michigan City. They also were the low bidder of the salt storage building. And then Larson-Danielson Construction Company was low bidder of the highway garage. So it's, you know, by separating things out a little bit, we were able to get a real good price. We also, upon Ms. Councilman Yagalski's request, we did put out to get a summary of what it would take analysis to connect the buildings, put it in as one building. We took an independent firm and had it done. And it ended up coming out with a net total savings of $48,703 is what we would save if we were to connect the buildings. One thing that is stressed with talking to him, he said the delay in the time, he put it like, I think, a four-month time delay. The time of delay is hard to say what escalation of cost would be. And it could be longer than the four months. So...
So the main point being, sorry to interrupt, but the main point you're making there is that we would have to rebid the entire project.
Correct.
Or at least those portions for the two building parts of that, we'd have to rebid that. And what we would be subjected to in the upcoming months, and especially considering the Fed raised interest rates today.
Yes. I mean, the $48,000 could be a loss of $100,000. It's hard to say, none of us had that crystal ball, so it's hard to say what's going to happen in the future.
Well, thank you, Mr. Levandowski. I would move to approve the Facility Director's recommendations for bids for the Rolling Prairie EMS base and highway garage, and also grant him permission to approach the council for funding.
I would second the motion. And thank you, Larry, for doing an amazing job on this and helping agree on our vote for the last 15 years, Tom, too. Great job. Second motion.
One more step to getting this under construction. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Marzinski?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
One other thing I'd like to mention, our planned goal, and I want to get it out now, is to have the groundbreaking on the Wednesday, the very first Commissioners meeting in the afternoon is what our goal is. We figured that's an easy way to get everybody together. We can get council members, Commissioners, and have the groundbreaking in the afternoon after the normal Commissioners meeting.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Levandowski.
Madam President, just to keep the record clear, we're going to need a separate motion on approving the application.
The plan, okay.
If you could.
Sure.
Do that next.
I would move then to approve the plan release design form here for signature.
So we have a motion to approve the application for the design construction plan release. A second. We have a motion and a second. A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Marzinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank all the Commissioners' support during this whole time.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Larry. And anecdotally, I think EMS is going to be happy that these two are separated out. It's going to hopefully allow them to have a little better night's sleep at night.
Yeah, that's our preferred design.
If they're sleeping and they're not out working.
Right.
Well, thank you very much.
Preferred design, right. Next on the agenda, consider approving the final revised contract with Woodruff &amp; Sons for resolution of longstanding drainage issues to medevue a state subdivision. Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening, Commissioners. Jay Sullivan, County Engineer. I don't have a revised contract. I gave all the information to Woodruff. They did not sign it. I do have a contract, which is the original contract. And we do have the agreement with the contractor about the addendum, which they gave us a quotation on, and also the asphalt. So I don't know what you want to do here as far as that. Also, I understand that it will have to go before council to get the $700,000, which didn't get appropriated into 2022 fiscal year 2022. So anything that I guess we, decisions we make tonight would have to be pending financing by the council, too.
So what you're saying, sorry, what you're saying is it's your understanding that because they approved it... that because they approved it under the last budget that they would have to?
I did send out an email to President Novak, and I haven't heard back from him yet on that. I did talk to Conde a little bit briefly in the back. I don't know that, why they wouldn't approve it, but.
Yeah, I wouldn't think they would either. From our brief conversations, I believe probably the best step at this point is to approve the contract that we have now and then work on a change order for the remaining amount later, because we're going to run into that 60-day window.
Yeah, right.
And we don't want, with that significant savings, with their contract being a million dollars, under the next closest, we don't want to run the risk of our 60 days running out.
The change order had been approved also. The actual change order that the council approved was good, but it's just that $700,000 didn't get encumbered for the, for the previous year. So the change order, the amount I had requested was good for the whole, whole contract price plus the change, two change orders.
Okay. If you could make the approval subject to attorney review on the revised contract, I'm certainly comfortable with you moving forward so we can keep this moving forward and preserve the bid amount, which makes sense.
Excellent. Thank you. So I would move that we approve the drainage contract here for Meadowview Estates pending attorney review, as well as any approach you may need to make to the council to make sure the funding is locked in for this project.
Sure, Ken.
We have a motion and a second to approve the final revised contract with Woodruff &amp; Sons for the resolution of this longstanding drainage issue we've been working on since I got on the commission four years ago. Subject to attorney review and any amendments that need to be made. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias.
Aye.
Commissioner Brzezinski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you so much, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have consider the first reading for the ordinance rezoning from A to R1B to all R1B Sloan Avenue Land Opportunities LLC.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katie Coff with Hepner, Wagner, and Evans. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Sloan Avenue Land Opportunities. The subject property consists of 166 acres and is located on the south side of Highway 2 in between North 350 East and 450 East. The petitioner's goal is to develop the subject property into a residential subdivision, and we are currently in the first phase of this process, which is asking for the rezone. The property is currently a split zone of both agricultural, agricultural, excuse me, and single-family residential R1B, and we are asking to be rezoned to all R1B. On February 22nd, we were, went before the Plan Commission, and we did receive a favorable recommendation at that meeting. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have of me. Thanks.
If anyone wanted to speak to that.
So this. Thank you. Mr. Ekovich?
Hello. Once again, my name is Mike Ekovich. I guess my main concern here is to notify the developer that the two most, the largest, most modern dairy farms in LaPorte County are within a half a mile of this proposed development. My concern is, I'm familiar with the ground. I'm the operator, cooperator of Echo Acres Dairy. There's a lot of, I guess, steep ground. There's going to be a lot of runoff onto the farmland adjacent to that, that we have an agreement. It's actually down with the state, once we, you know, our IDM permits, and I'm afraid that runoff water is going to come across the manure fertilizer, pesticide, herbicide, applied land, and further wash it down the line in adjacent properties, ditches, retention ponds. I'm also concerned about the complaint of smell. I think at this point, the county needs to, being that I, Kona Ekovich concrete as well, I see we need, you know, the effective growth, too. We need that. We need ag. I think we need to put a fine line, and at this point, I think where the county is, we need housing in one point, ag on the other. I'm not completely against this. I just think we need to protect, I'm here to protect my children, who are already taking part in the dairy farm, along with the adjacent farmers as well. So I want to be, I'd like to table any decision on this until preliminary drawings are made with retention ponds, where the houses are going to be located, and you know, if that means green space in between ag and the houses, you know, if that's wooded area to kind of lower the smell. Ultimately, as the county, I think the bypass going around the east side of LaPorte, I think if we pack that full of the residential, and we keep a fine line so we don't, future generations don't have to farm, or have to fight to farm. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
So I'm Jim Parburg, 4701 East 300 North, Rolling Prairie, and so I own all on the south side of that property. And, you know, there's manure that gets spread there. I raise highly intensive crops. I raise tomatoes for red gold. I raise onion sets, small bulbs, for gardening, and this is our busy shipping season. We raise garlic. We raise seed corn, and so a lot of different things. There might be, when we raise some of these intensive crops, our sprayer may be going completely across the south border of that property. Probably, I know there's at least 15 times that we're spraying those fields with crop protectants, and so there's, there's just, we're marrying, we're trying to marry two, two dreams, and my dream is to farm and someone else's dream to live out in the country. And so how we mitigate this and mesh, I don't have the answers. I just, I think his point was valid, to allow plenty of space, because people that sometimes move out to the country don't understand all the things we do, and then we have to deal with the consequences of that. And sometimes we get saluted as people drive by, and it's usually not a friendly salute. And so, we're just asking, you know, we just think it would be wise not to put us all together so tightly. I mean, that whole south side, I'm all along there. My, I have three sons that are currently full-time with me, and so we plan on doing this for a long, long time. And so just asking for some mercy and some, some wisdom, you know, some of that property is already zoned residential. There was wisdom somewhere previously, and so the property was bought with, without having any changes, and I wish it would have gone before contingent, but it wasn't. So we're just asking for a little bit of guidance and a little bit of wisdom, and marrying the two, the two worlds. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
My name's Joe Baltis. We farm directly northwest, northeast of the proposed development. Same concerns as Mike and Jim. We raise hogs. Our hog operation is about a mile southwest, or southeast, I'm sorry, of the proposed development, and we spread manure on the fields around the development. Again, there will be odors, and the concern that we've had in the past is, we spread manure, and we get a lot of calls and complaints on the odor from houses along the fields that we've spread on. We spread according to the rules and regulations, so there's always that concern, and we'll have to fight that down the road. Also, these fields, as Jim says, the barriers that if housing development goes in, will there be any kind of barrier put up as far as protecting the ground that's farmed from the houses? And then another concern is that we're putting up, or proposing to put up a housing development less than a quarter mile away from another housing development that has 30 unused plots, building sites that have not had any buildings put up. So why we are proposing to build another, another housing development before the housing development down the road is filled up. So it's just something to think about. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Randy Beach, 4177 West Schultz Road. I don't live around this, and I can feel their pain already. Six and a half years, the county made a wrong decision for my house. Let's not make another one, please.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
My name is Tony Albertson, and my property joins right next to where this proposed subdivision is. Commissioner Mathias, Commissioner Brzezinski, and Commissioner Haney, and respectfully, we showed up at the zoning meeting to remonstrate against changeness from agriculture, and like Mr. Parburg said, that somebody had the foresight to zone that agriculture to have a separation, and we were against that. In solidarity tonight, we're here again to appeal to you to, you know, keep that way it is. There's a subdivision, to reiterate what he said, with many empty lots. Short five years ago, we had a referendum. We spent approximately $45 million bucks to remodel our schools and build on. Now we're going to stress those with overcrowding. There's a 19 to 1 student ratio now, which is higher than the 17 to 1 state average. So, you know, we got a 16-year bond to pay for that, so our taxes are going to go up to fund it. It was incorrectly stated by their attorney last time that the public utilities, septic services from the city of LaPorte was available, and it is not. It's on the wrong side of the road. That was put in for the town of Rolling Prairie. It's not available to that. But, so in solidarity, we're here to appeal to you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Mr. Pollan, I know you're on the line, and we've had some discussions about the timing of this and when the, when the, the development gets more detailed. So can you share a little bit about that with us? Mr. Pollan, are you there? Perhaps he's taking a break.
While we're waiting for Mr. Pollan, if I may?
Yes.
Sure. So I live, I live on some acreage right near Door Village, and the farmer that farms some of my land, he's a dairy farmer, and he spreads, he spreads manure from his cows. I'm not sure how it goes with pigs, but when he, and I knowingly knew this, and I'm fine with it, but just for the edification for folks who wouldn't know, for when the manure is applied to my fields, which is a greener option, I'm all for it. There is an odor to it, and depending, especially, even though it's right next to my house, depending on which way the wind blows, it can definitely drive up those odors, and if it's a sun-baked day, for about two weeks, we don't have the windows open in our house. We run the air conditioner. It's part of living in the country. I got no problem with it whatsoever, and I love the guy who farms my land, and, and I'm good with it. But at the same time, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, it's important that people realize when you move out, unincorporated areas especially, that some of the stuff, you know, you have farm trucks that drive by out front, you have different smells and odors and stuff like that. So my, I guess kind of my question is, for you, and I don't know if you're able to answer this, but is the developer going to, if this goes through, kind of give a pre-warning to prospective lot buyers that there are agricultural industry happening right next to them, and there may be, from time to time, equipment sounds, various odors and whatnot that come from that agricultural landscape? Because one of the, for example, I also live just on the edge of the airport. So when I moved in, I had to sign a thing that says, you know, there's an airport within, I forget, it's two miles, whatever that thing is acknowledging that. So just like with, is there anything along those lines? Because the biggest thing that I have is that if someone's living somewhere and then something moves into it, that's one thing, but if someone's knowingly moving, let's say, move next to an airport, and then they complain about the sound of the planes. If the airport came after you were there, that's one thing, but if you knowingly move next to it, that's another. So is there anything that your developer has to address those concerns and kind of pre-warn buyers that you're moving in, moving into the country, and from time to time, these things happen?
Yes. I apologize. I have not been a part of any talks of that. I, I believe the developer would be open to that. I just am not at liberty to say that there's a set plan for it, but it's definitely something that I can bring up to the petitioner and the team, and I'm sure they would be open to it.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Since I am on the Plan Commission, I was part of the last discussion, and I live right on the phone with Mr. Ekovich, right across the road from his Uncle Joe, old Mr. Baltis, about a year. And I understand exactly what you're saying. I can smell Joe's cows where I live, okay? I'm not complaining about it. What we used to always say, living in the country, when people would complain about the smell, my dad would say, well, that smells like money to me. But I wanted to note that before we move forward on this at all, things that have to be addressed down the road, one would be drainage, stormwater management, which these, today's subdivision designs require to hold 150% of their water. Also, there would be adequate vegetation buffers. So these are things that would be addressed, but they can't be addressed now until we move forward. Until we pass this tonight, then none of this would take place. So, yeah, this is a part of the plan. And I did want to correct the gentleman about the sewer line. That sewer line goes to feed Rolling Prairie, but it doesn't become part of Rolling Prairie until it gets on the north side of US 20. That all belongs to the city of LaPorte, and all they have to do is shoot it under the road and tie in, and that is part of the plan, which will not only help to protect the aquifer, it will also help with the sewer, lead a little more flow. So there's a lot of things that are being considered, but unless we move past this portion tonight, then we can't even talk about it. So I believe they have a good plan. You know, somebody's not going to buy a lot out there by looking at it on TV or on internet. They're going to go out there, and if they go out there, and if they smell the farm and they don't like it, they certainly don't have to land there. It's, like Joe says, we live in the country. We want to live in the country. I personally don't mind the smell. If they don't, don't land there. As far as the other stuff, as far as the vegetation, the drainage, the sewer, it's all stuff that has to be discovered, and it all has to be approved by another body, either by the commissioners, by the Plan Commission, or whoever, before it can move forward from that point. But if we don't get past tonight, then we won't even get to talk about it. So that's where we're at.
So that would be my question. I have lived in the country, although I don't currently, so I, part of the thing that you mentioned about spraying, that really does concern me, because without a buffer, that spray is going to carry to children and to animals, and, you know, that's not good. So have they had discussions about buffer and how much, how many homes could be safely contained on that 160 acres?
I apologize to cut you off. I don't know exactly the number of units. However, I know that there have been talks about buffering, and I do want to commend the county's planning staff, too, the developer, and his team has had a lot of contact with Mr. Pollan in meetings with certain members of the staff to try to follow all the rules, and they do plan and intend on following all the stormwater requirements and the ordinances. So what, we're going to try to do this by the book, and as everyone has said, this is step one out of a pretty lengthy process, so.
So I guess that's, that's my concern, is voting on something where there's so many variables. You know, how do we, I know the Plan Commission has struggled with this, and that's why the vote was not, you know, unanimous, because people are concerned that it, you know, promises are made, but promises sometimes are broken, and that is a concern for, for us as we vote for this. I do understand that without this vote, the, the property owner is not going to develop the drainage plan and develop the, you know, the, all of the erosion plan and the buffers and the, I understand that, but it is really hard to vote for something where you have, you know, in my head, I have a lot of concerns. You know, I'm not so concerned about smell, because if you live in the country, that's what you get, and that's, you know, that's part of country life. But I am concerned about drainage. I'm concerned about, you know, Rich talked about the sewer, and I, Mike Pollan, I wish he was on, because I would ask a little bit more about. ask a little bit more about the sewer and the access to the sewer. Maybe Shaw, you know more about it than.
Two things, Madam President. I got a text that indicates Mike Pollan has sent you some comments. Apparently his mic is not working. So he does have some comments that he sent. Secondly, what the commission might consider, again, your option, might be to consider approving it only on first reading tonight with instruction that the developer meet with the affected neighbors to get the assurances that they're looking for. I mean, they've expressed some legitimate concerns. And perhaps that way you keep the process moving by approving it on first reading while directing the developer, who's an out-of-state developer, to provide assurances through the building staff to the affected neighbors that might help address some of the concerns they've expressed.
I'd like to motion that we approve it on first reading only, by title only.
And I would second that. And if you wouldn't mind, some of the questions that we had here tonight as well, be prepared to kind of answer next time as well. Not necessarily, you know, full drawn-up plans that, you know, is going to cost the expertise and time of others. But something approximating our answers, just to give us a ballpark view. I know later it'll be more in-depth as it goes through the different processes. Just something a little bit to, you know, kind of give some assurances to both landowners and to us before we make a final decision.
Commissioner Haney, I should mention, Ms. Kopp and I had a nice conversation yesterday. And what I did indicate to her that would be helpful, who the developer is, that he can come in. Apparently, he's had other eco-friendly developments in other areas. But I think he needs to reassure the neighbors of what his plans are. And so hopefully, this time between first and second reading will help her be able to get the developer to meet with planning commission staff and the neighbors to try to get some resolution.
Absolutely.
I would add also, Madam President, is Terrell Rodriguez mentioned earlier, we need more housing in La Porte County. With so many businesses and so many things coming to La Porte County, we want to have a place for people to live in La Porte County. And any houses that go in out there will also add to our assessed value as a county, which we need. So it's just something to consider. The thing I don't want to do would be to kill listening now and not move at all. At least let us move it forward so we can get some answers to these questions, to make sure that if they're going to do it, that they're going to do it right.
I think that's fair, to reassure the neighbors, but also reassure the commission that we are making a wise choice. Because we don't want to make a mistake that ends up being something we have to remediate further down the road. So we have a motion. And Rich, did you second the motion?
I think I know the motion.
Oh, you made the motion. You seconded it. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call vote? This is approval or denial on first reading only?
Just point of order, does someone need to read the title? If the title's been read? No?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you said.
Someone need to read the title or no?
Sure. Consider first reading for ordinance rezoning from A to R1B to all R1B Sloan Avenue land opportunities.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Mr. Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mazinski?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you back at the next meeting with some facts and figures. Thank you. Consider opting back in to the opioid settlement in Johnson &amp; Johnson and distributors case with recent passage of legislation providing greater return for cities and counties in Indiana and related documents. Mr. Beechey, thank you, gentlemen.
Well, I stood before you asking to opt out of the statutory framework for the settlement on the opioid litigation. And since then, the statute has been changed. The legislature passed a completely new statute with the governor signed about two weeks ago. If I may approach. I'm packing for each of you. And under the new statutory scheme, the local municipalities are treated much better. Our attorneys are recommending that the county opt back in. Now, this is not for all of the defendants. This is for Johnson &amp; Johnson and Jen and some of the distributors. So there are still defendants remaining. If you look at your first, the first part of the packet, part of the settlement will be, I don't want to say restricted, but there will be certain areas where the county can spend the money. And then some of that settlement money coming in, there will be no restrictions. Okay? So the attorneys fee, the attorneys cut their fee. And there's a short timeline on this. They're talking about beginning payout in April. Now, that's at the federal level. So it's got to trickle down from state to the county. So we're not sure when we'll get the money. And I can't tell you how much because we don't know, there's not a settlement with all the defendants yet. Okay? But I do recommend that we, the county opt back in. And it will be part of the state's process. And we'll get a larger share than what we were looking at last time under the last statute.
As Mr. Beechey indicates, it's a much improved statute now.
It is.
I mean, it was not, you recall, part of the reason that he came before you was, I think ninety percent of the proceeds were going to the state as opposed to the sharing with local entities. There were about twenty-six other counties and forty-five cities that had opted out to, and under this, they would rejoin the multi-state settlement because the statute has been improved to provide for more distribution to localities.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to motion that we opt back into the opioid settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to consider opting back into the opioid settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson and various distributors. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mazinski?
Aye.
Mr. Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Thank you, Doug. Consider support for establishing a new contract RN position in the health department to coordinate the establishment of inter-agency fetal infant mortality review. Amanda, and I do, I've seen a few people on the line that I think are from the team. So Amanda, are you on? And I think Maria Fruth is on from the Healthcare Foundation of La Porte.
Yes, they are. I have Maria Fruth and Dr. Wieland with me. So briefly, to tell you about what we're doing and why we're speaking to you tonight, the health department is intending to establish a FEMA program within our nursing division. And tonight, we're seeking support for creating a contract position to both coordinate this program and the team. Fetal infant mortality review is an evidence-based process to understand the circumstances surrounding fetal and infant mortality at city, county, and also state levels. And to help me tell you more exactly about what fetal infant mortality review team is and why it is so desperately needed here within La Porte County, we're joined tonight by Maria Fruth and Dr. Wieland. And with that, I will turn it over to Maria.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm Maria Fruth, as Amanda said, president, CEO of the Healthcare Foundation. And Amanda's going to put just a couple slides to give you a little more information about what is this all about. So this is just an introduction, if I may go to the next slide. Just again, as an FYI, the Healthcare Foundation of La Port was created March 1 of 2016. We just celebrated our sixth anniversary this, the beginning of this month. And the foundation was created from the proceeds of the ZIL, of IU Health La Porte Hospital. Since inception, the foundation has distributed, we're a grant-making foundation, you know, again, private and independent. And we have awarded over thirty million dollars of grants from 2017 to the end of last year. We're in a process of reviewing out the grant applications right now, which we have a record number, by the way. So on the left side of your screen, you just see mission values, our objectives, our leading to our vision. Our mission is to empower the residents of La Porte County to live healthy and well. And the vision for our county is that, you know, is to become one of the top ten healthiest communities in the state of Indiana. We do not have a pretty number. When we started this road, you know, through the county rankings, out of the ninety-two counties in health behavior as an example, a lot of the indicators. But at that point, we're ninety-one out of ninety-two. And so we have been working towards this goal with a tremendous amount of help from a lot of organizations, the cities and the county. So I'm going just to focus quickly. What is the Partners for Healthiest, for Healthier Babies? We established that in 2019. Why? Dr. Wieland will talk a little bit more about this in a minute. But this is part of our, since day one, strategic planning of the board of directors. And we created what we call a deep dive and bubbled to the top that one of the major issues we had in La Porte County is infant mortality and low birth weight. We then formed a council. There are thirty-plus members of that council. And those are all organizations. When we conveyed this group, those are organizations that serve pregnant women in the community and our new moms. And around the table, just to give you a sense of who is there, both of the hospitals in the county, the OB physicians' offices, all of them, the nurse family partnership, Dune Brook, a lot of other organizations, and of course, the county health department. Now, that should be leading us on all those incredible public health improvements. And we could not say thank you enough to Amanda for taking this challenge head-on and understanding behind the scenes and bringing this to the next stage of, you know, solving this particular issue. Just quickly to let you know how we work, we map the current services that we have in the community. We know every one of them. And you can see all of them on our website, ten, twenty, thirty, who is providing what, from work to you name it, who is supporting our pregnant moms and new parents. We then identify the service gaps, because that's part of what we're trying to do. We use RBA, results-based accountability platform, to make sure that we're carrying this, you know, program, this project, to the next level and the next level. We then, of course, we're very data-driven. And we reviewed all the trends, all the issues, all the evidence-based programs, et cetera, et cetera, recognized what's already working here. And the whole group discussed, where do we go from here? How, we identify what we can do more of, better, different, to make sure that we're doing that. So I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Wieland. And I want to just quickly introduce Dr. Wieland. A lot of you know him, retired physician in the community for many, many years. You know, personally, I can tell, an outstanding individual, very caring person. He is a board member of our foundation. And he's also the liaison. He is a clinical expert on this particular deep dive. And he's also the chair of our grant committee. So he wears a lot of hats. And he has been a tremendous guide through this process. So if you go to the next slide, you are already there. I see. Dr. Wieland, would you take over? And thank you very much to all of you for listening and learning more and trying to assist this entire group to move to the next, you know, level of achievement in here. It would be amazing the day that all our babies are born healthy and well. And low birth weight is not an issue. And infant mortality is no longer, you know, in our books. Dr. Wieland?
Okay. Thank you very much, Moran. Thanks to all of you for inviting us today. This slide here says quite a bit. And that's that our infant mortality rate in La Porte County is eleven point four. That means out of every one thousand births, live births, eleven point four infants die in their first year of life. That's fifty-one percent higher than national average, forty-two percent higher than Indiana. We've had ten fetal deaths in the year of 2020. That's the year that we're looking at here. And thirteen infant deaths, as you can see, five from unsafe sleep, and the rest due to other issues. Our county ranks eleventh in death rates. Go ahead and go to the next slide, Amanda. Here, you see the results displayed in a spreadsheet format. And you can see at the top there, the infant mortality rate rising to eleven point four in the year 2020. Underneath that, you'll see what we call risk factors for infant mortality. The first one there is preterm birth. That means a baby born before thirty-seven weeks gestation. Now, that not only puts them at risk for infant death in the first year of life, it also puts them at risk for other health issues further on in life. Low birth weight and very low birth weight are the next two that you see. And you see those have both risen. Low birth weight are babies that are born less than five pounds, eight ounces. And very low birth weight, less than three pounds, four ounces. Then below that, you see a listing of mothers who received prenatal care in the first twelve to thirteen weeks of their pregnancy. You see, that is only fifty-seven point eight percent, where you look at the national average, it's seventy-seven point five percent. Getting mothers in their first trimester to obstetrical care is critical. Mothers not breastfeeding, another issue we have in our community. Twenty-three percent of mothers who are discharged are not breastfeeding their babies. Smoking during pregnancy, as I've said before, that number of twenty-one point six percent back in 2017 absolutely astounded me. Even at sixteen point three percent, it's way too high. You see, the national average is about six point nine percent. Mothers on Medicaid and teen pregnancy, round those off. You can see the number of live births down at the bottom. Okay, go to the next slide, Amanda. So why do we recommend a FEMA team for La Porte County? Well, for one thing, to address the issue of infant mortality and fetal deaths in our community, the first thing we have to do is determine what is causing those deaths. The fetal infant mortality review team is a public health tool that is used throughout the United States, is evidence-based. And now we have forty-four counties in our own state that have these teams. So it brings solutions to the table by taking the findings and putting them into action programs for primary and secondary prevention. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So if we were to kind of go over what is FEMA, the first thing it is, is it's a process for collecting data. And so the person that Amanda is going to be hiring will be intensely involved in collecting data on all infant and fetal deaths. And at first, we're probably going to want to go back three to five years to really get a feel for the possible etiologies for this problem. That information then is de-identified. The medical records may be birth certificates, death certificates, hospital records, doctor's office records, social worker records. Those things would all be involved in that. That helps us understand how the, what we call, social determinants of health, economic issues, educational issues, environmental issues, safety issues, maybe playing into these poor outcomes. Then it recommends that case review team that has gone over all this information, then recommends interventions and changes to policies and protocols to help us overcome these higher mortality rates. Those recommendations are then given to a community action team. And the community action team would be our Partners for Healthier Babies team, for the most part. And they will be implementing these things. And then the FEMA process and team looks at the results of the interventions that are being tried to assess and see if we are truly improving the situation. So I think that brings us to you, Amanda.
Thank you, Dr. Wieland. Thank you, Maria. So what I'm going to be doing is looking at to hire a, hopefully, an RN position that has a background, has an OB background. And if not an RN position, somebody who has some, has an extensive medical background because of the material that we'll be looking at and reviewing. This will be a contract person. This will be grant-funded. So it's not coming out of the county budget at all. We will be getting grants for this position. And the position itself, probably beginning, will be around thirty hours a week. But as we get through those back years, those three to five years, and as we streamline the process, it could drop down it could drop down to around twenty hours a week. I am looking to hopefully have that position filled by the end of May, and so we can then start looking at filling the team, probably anywhere from ten to fifteen members on the team from the community, who are pediatricians, neonatologists, family medicine, other agencies like Dune Brook or Health Link to participate, possibly law enforcement, to come together, review these, review these cases, why these fetals, why they had these fetal deaths, these infant deaths, and see if we have any correlations, and if there's anything that we can recommend to a community action team to be able to, to go out to the community and make these corrections, so we have healthy babies being born in Lepore County. This first year, this first grant cycle will be funded by the Healthcare Foundation of Lepore, is supporting us to get this program up and running this year. So really, what we're asking for tonight is the commissioner's support moving forward, getting this up and running and having healthier babies in Lepore County. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a contract position, this is a question for our attorney. As a contract position, we're the contractual body of the county, do we need to send this to the county council because there is no county dollars involved?
Well, it, just in the interest of comity and good relations between the two bodies, you may want to, but technically, it's not required. You certainly want to inform them of what's coming down the pike. The, one of the things that you recall from the conference call was that there was a belief that there should be grant dollars available in subsequent years to cover this. I think HFL is willing to cover it in year one. There should be grant dollars in subsequent years, and so that may be, is made clear as well to the council, that the commission is not looking to load another position on without ultimately finding a route to fund it, I think.
Very good, excellent. In that case, then, I would move to allow Director Lanners to establish a new contract position in the Health Department to coordinate the establishment of an interagency fetal-infant mortality review team, and to update the council on how things are going to move forward.
I would second that motion and remind everyone that the council has done in years past, as I enjoyed eight years of that, is that if something was funded by a grant, and the grant runs out, generally, they won't fund it. They'll say, if you don't have the grant, you don't have a job. But this sounds to me like this would be very well-supported, I don't know why it wouldn't be. So let's, I'll check it, but we'll move it along. I think it's a great thing.
We have a motion and a second to support establishing a new contract RN position in the Health Department to coordinate establishment of an interagency fetal-infant mortality review team. And then Amanda will be going to the council to update them on this initiative. Roll call, please.
Just a quick point of order, I purposefully left out RN out of the, out of my motion, simply to allow more flexibility for Director Lanners, as she indicated during her talk that she may not need an RN, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you, thank you, Amanda, thank you, Maria, thank you, Dr. Wieland. Really appreciate you spending time.
Thank you, commissioners, so very much.
Thank you, certainly needed. Next on the agenda, consider the contract with SEH to assist the treasures department, Treasury Department in 2020 reconciliations, and I believe Joey's on the line. Good evening again, Joey.
I am. This is to continue our 2019 reconciliation that was just completed with the help of Baker Tilly, but we found that Baker Tilly was great to work with, but they're not close enough to us. We needed someone, we feel we need someone, that is close enough to help us in our office several times a week, and we reached out to SEH to see if they would be available to do this. And Damon Sekulas, who has helped the county many, many times, not only with budgets, but with other things, financial things, we reached out to Damon, and he is willing to help us and move us forward so that we can get 2020 under our belt with that audit also. So I'm asking for your approval to have them help us with this 2020 reconciliation and move forward.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
The contract's been reviewed?
Yes, it has, I'm comfortable recommending it to you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with SEH to assist the treasurer's office with 2020 reconciliations. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Thank you, Joey. Next on the agenda, consider the MOU with Clinic Solutions LLC to provide consulting services related to the health clinic services.
Good evening, commissioners, Barb Mossman, Human Resources Department. As part of our strategic planning for the county, our insurance committee continually looks into ways of improving benefits and controlling the costs for the county. One of these items that we are looking at that's before you tonight is North Shore Health Clinics Centers of Indiana. North Shore would provide a local shared clinic and pharmacy for the county's medical plan members and their dependents to receive medical services and prescriptions at no cost. With this program, we are hoping that the county will start looking at great savings towards not only our health plan dollars, but also for our county employees. We're not looking at any additional funding right now for this program. We should have everything budgeted underneath our health, healthcare budget at this point in time. And what I am needing from you tonight is just your signature for the MOUs for not only North Shore Health, but also for the Clinical Solutions, which will be overseeing the administration of that plan.
Thank you, Barb. I know all three of the commissioners have been on very, at various meetings and Zoom meetings and in-person meetings to discuss ways that we can cut our health plan costs and also provide savings directly to our employees. Savings to employees and their healthcare would be very well-received by all of our families, especially those who often use their healthcare benefits. So at this time, I don't know if we have any more discussion or if we want to consider a motion.
I would move to adopt and approve the MOU for Clinic Solutions and North Shore Health for Employee Clinic. I also just want to point out, based upon the survey results we got back, just for any employee who is not certain on this, this is a hundred percent voluntary. You do not have to go and visit this clinic if you don't want to. If you do, there are significant cost savings to both you and the county, and it's completely a hundred percent voluntary. At no point do you have to if you don't want to. But if you want to save some money and not have any out-of-pocket expenses and potentially not pay anything for quite a few of your prescriptions, this may be the way to go. It's something that we've all worked hard on, and especially on the, on our insurance review group, Barb Mossman, substantially Councilman Mullenhour, and obviously myself on this, as we've worked together for the past, we've been working on this for about seven months now, trying to put this thing together. So we're really excited about it, and I think, I think employees will find it to be very worthwhile if they decide to utilize it. And you can use this in conjunction with any specialists you have or anything else. So it's just, it's voluntary as much or little or not at all if you don't want to use it, but it's something that could substantially save everyone, including the taxpayers, quite a bit of money.
So we have a motion. We need to separate this out, so I'll take the first one, consider MOU with Clinic Solutions LLC to provide consulting services related to the health clinic. We have a motion? Did you, okay, we have a motion and a second. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. The motion is carried. Next on the agenda, consider the MOU with North Shore Health Centers to provide the medical services into Lepore County, as referenced in the previous presentation by Ms. Mossman. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Check it.
We have a motion and a second to consider the MOU with North Shore Health Centers to provide medical services for Lepore County employees. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mathias?
Aye.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Motion is carried. We've come to the Commissioner comments section of the agenda. Commissioner Haney?
Thank you, Madam President. First, before I forget, last week, we had a meeting, a workshop for the Commercial Truck Ordinance, proposed some fact-finding with that and a workshop. There will be another workshop on April eighth at 1:00 PM this time. The last one was at 6:00 PM. This upcoming one on April eighth will be at 1:00 PM, right here in this meeting room. So, you know, any members of the public, especially if you're involved in any of the trucking or anything, we had a member, the public who showed up, who operates a septic company, and brought up some good, some good information on that as well. So if you're involved in any way, shape, or form with trucking or anything else, definitely, please, if it impacts you at all from the citizenry, please come to the workshop and/or send us a message, let us know your thoughts, because that would go a long way to making sure that we are respecting everyone's rights and making sure that business can be done here in Lepore County, but also there's a clear, concise path that streamlines things as well as protects everyone in the county, be it residents and/or those who deliver our goods and whatnot, so, and services. In addition to that, as we brought up, we had a Zoom on the health clinic, which both my fellow commissioners were on as well. And I want to touch on as well just how well our Health Department has done with our vaccine clinic. I was out and I visited, again, the newer location there on Lincoln Way, and it's, this is the first I'm hearing that it's, that they want to do some filming there for some training, but it doesn't surprise me. It is a well-oiled machine there, and they've just done a fantastic job. So huge shout-out to our Health Department on that and the entire team out there. As I brought up earlier, we met with Secretary of State Sullivan earlier this week. The discussions we had, that, what I mentioned earlier was a very small part of the larger discussion we had about elections and different matters relating to Indiana. One of the nice things, and I don't want to steal our clerk's thunder too much here, but we're going to have some paper ballot, or some, not paper ballot, but some paper trail from some of the, we have these devices that attach to our voting machines that print out a record in real time. I think right now, we have about ten percent, if I remember correctly, of the machines that'll be able to do that for this next election, and hopefully, there'll be some funding from downstate to provide some more, hopefully. But we'll see, I'm sure our clerk will update on that, us on that as soon as that comes up. But that's very exciting to see in moving us forward and making sure that, you know, every citizen of Lepore County can have faith and trust in what we're doing here. There's a huge team at work, and I would be remiss if I didn't shout out the entire election board, you know, on both sides, that everyone on the election board seems to be doing a fantastic and phenomenal job, including both attorneys there. So, so thank you so much for that, and I know the people of Lepore County appreciate that. As was Director Rodriguez of our Economic Development, mentioned earlier, there's a ribbon-cutting today Commissioner Mathias and I were both at for Corsicana Mattress, and I'm just so thankful that that building has been restored to a working environment. It looks, it looks so much better than it did before, and that could not have been done without the hard work of our entire economic team, as well as the Building Commission, and Mike Pollan and his inspectors, his head electrical inspector as well, whose name is slipping me at the moment, but that went out there and really poured their heart and soul into making sure that worked. And I hope that stands as an example to any other manufacturers or companies that are looking to come into Lepore County, that, you know, you're here at the county, we will try and cut through whatever red tape or anything else that we need to make sure you, you know, if you choose Lepore County, we're here and ready for you. And, like I said, I'm just so pleased that that's been out there, because that's not far from where I live, and I pass by it all the time, and a lot of amazing things are happening down, all across Lepore County, but especially in the southern half of our And briefly, I want to just touch on our housing needs and concerns. Been part of, been part of and in on several meetings for housing. Lepore County desperately needs additional housing. It's something that we really, truly need at all ends of the spectrum, from, be it entry level to the top end and everywhere in between, especially in the middle, we need housing really bad. So I'm hopeful that what we had here tonight, they're going to come back with some good stuff for us at the next meeting, and that'll allay some of the concerns of the folks out there, because, you know, getting three hundred additional home sites in Lepore County would be huge. So with that, I'd like to close quickly with a quote from Eli Avizel, and he said, "There may be times when we are powerless to prevent injustice, but there must never be a time when we fail to protest it." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brzezinski?
Always enlightened. I say hats off to Marcus Electric for the outstanding job they did on the Michigan City drawbridge. It's a shame that we put them in that position where they had to be, when they scrambled right at the end due to the process being held up by an illustrious auditor there, but they did get the parts, they did get them installed, they did a test. Amazing, amazing what they have accomplished, and shows how valuable they are to Lepore County. Speaking of the drawbridge, I see that our folks in Michigan City hats off to them. They got the hundred and fifty million dollar project going downtown. Now, that's great, all those people that are going to live there and do business there and stuff, I hope they realize that their way to the beach, not only for them, and for tourists, and for emergency vehicles, is that hundred-year-old bridge that we're sinking a million and a half dollars on every year to keep it operating, which eventually, that won't work anymore. We are working desperately to try to come up with another, an alternative to that bridge. And it's got some great ideas, it's going to take quite a bit of money, not as much money as a new drawbridge, but it's kind of amazing to do. And I mentioned, I had a conversation with the mayor of Michigan City about the drawbridge, and they didn't really seem too interested in helping us out, but they did come up with a hundred and fifty million for this other project. But we're going to continue working on that, we're looking to get a planning grant here very soon, so we can lay out our plan for a new bridge, something that Michigan City desperately can use. And other than that, other issues that we talked about tonight, let's catch me, we've done out of it. With that, Madam President, I yield to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brzezinski. It's late, so I'm going to be very brief. We had a ribbon-cutting today, as we know, welcoming Texas company Corsicana to Michigan City with, sorry, to Lepore County with three hundred and fifty jobs, three hundred and fifty families, and some of those new employees were lined up today for the ceremony and then for some pictures. And, you know, mostly young people, young families, at the early, early start of their career. And I have to say, you know, I've done economic development for a long time, I, you know, GAF and Freck USA and Central States, but when you see the people, that's what really makes, that's what really unites our team. So we talked about the Building Commission, we talked about the Economic Development Team, Mike is still with us, Tony and Matt. It takes a village, this is a complex project, so from inspection, when they went into that building, it was filled with puddles, there were plants growing through the building and through the roof, and I was speaking to the Corsicana executive today, and he said, "It would have scared most people away." We were walking around the building with our iPhones, flashlights on, trying to see what the structure looked like, that's, there was no electricity, and most of us have passed that building countless times and seen it getting worse and worse and worse. And to know that, you know, when I first saw the first trailer in there delivering materials for mattresses, I couldn't get over it. I was like, this actually is coming to pass. So it's been eighteen months of work, eighteen months of nudging, eighteen months of effort behind the scenes, and we couldn't be more pleased for the three hundred and fifty families that will be positively affected. So that leads me to my normal Lepore County Works profile. So I like to use some of my time to focus on the retention work that we're doing, because retaining the companies that we have and helping them grow right here in Lepore County is more important than trying to lure the companies from Texas. We want to make sure that the companies that we currently have that are, that are hiring and employing our families stay healthy and that we're here to help them. So one of the things that many of them are facing is that they need employees. And so when I was talking to one of the media today, he was asking me about our employees, and I said, "You know, we have a lot of people that are underemployed in Lepore County. They may be working a minimum wage job, but they're looking for opportunities." And so tonight, I want to focus on Peepers, and I was looking in my purse, and I realized I have, I have a pair of Peepers with me, so, excuse me. So Peepers, aren't they cute? So Peepers is a company that is a fourth-generation, family-owned spectacle company. They are located at- They are located at 9935 East US Highway 12 in Michigan City. They started in 1908 as a screen cloth and hardware provider. They founded Peepers Reading Glass in 1993, and the reason is Terry Salmon, the wife of the Salmon family, the mom, the matriarch, was looking for readers like these. And she had to go to CBS, or Walgreens, or Walmart, or whatever, and they're those kind of, you know, everyone wears the same ones, they're kind of brown, and they're little, and the men wear the same ones as the women, and she was frustrated. She was like, she wanted a fashion statement, so she went home and mentioned it to her husband, and they came up with an idea to make Peepers. The Salmon Company currently employs 80 people with a salary range between $40,000 and $80,000, and an hourly wage between $19 and $20 an hour to start. The company offers employees major medical, 401K, disability, dental, and eye insurance. They offer their employees a clean, state-of-the-art facilities. They've had numerous expansions, and they have a full exercise room and numerous break rooms for their employees. Alex Salmon, who is the up-and-coming younger Salmon, serves as company president, and he encourages company pride and wants his employees to see Peepers as their employer of choice. So, today, the company features stylish, optical-quality reading glasses and sunglasses that are in style for all seasons. Of note is that the Peepers Center Stage Sunglasses has been on Oprah's Favorite List for four consecutive years. They are sold at peepers.com, they're sold in optical stores, and I think you can find them in some retail stores as well. Peepers Company has been named the best place to work in the state of Indiana for four years running. In addition, in 2013, between 2013 and 2020, Peepers was honored as one of INC 5,000 fastest-growing companies due to their 162% gross growth in the last few years. 162%, like, that's pretty unheard of. Made right here in the beautiful LaPorte County. So, if you are interested in employment and you're looking for a new career or advancing your own career, go to peepers.com and hit their Careers tab. We will also be posting this on the county website under LaPorte County Works, where if you are looking for a job, it's a bountiful resource. There's all kinds of companies. You click on their icon, and it tells you what that company makes, and then it also tells you how to apply for the job, whether it's in person, or what your skill set needs to be. Most of the companies are willing to train people, so they're looking for people with a good work ethic, and that's one of the things I spoke with Corsicana about today. I said, "You know, LaPorte County is known for having hard-working people. People who show up on time for work will be trainable, will be loyal, and will be good employees." So, if you're looking for a company to work for, Salmon Company, AKA Peepers, is looking for workers. So, with that, thank you, and appreciate everyone's patience. We had a long agenda tonight. Thank you, and good night.